I'll call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, as you can see, Michelle is not here tonight. Tina will be taking her place and taking our notes. And Tina, roll call.
Uh, Dr. Bartold.
Here.
Bobby Brown. Jill Maddick Nelson.
Here.
Justin Mettler.
Here.
Scott Peterson.
Here.
Catherine Solon. Angie Schreiber.
Here.
Judy Schrader. Anna Pyatt.
Here.
Okay, did anybody sign up for public comments? No? Okay. We will move on to the consent agenda. Looking for a motion.
I don't have the motion out. That's yours. I move the board approve the agenda minutes from the June 10th, 2024 Board of Education meeting minutes from the June 17th and June 26th, 2024 Special Board of Education minutes. July Committee meeting minutes District Retirement and Resignations Report. Report of District New Hires, Financial Reports for June and July 2024. Consideration of Current Bills, Checks 8074 through 8159, and the amount of $1,759.36. ACH is 232401344232401490, and the amount of $1,527,749.31. And wire transfers in the amount of $13,240.86 for a total of $1,648,049.53.
Kristin, would you like to speak to your motion?
No, I'm out of breath.
Any further comments on the consent agenda? Hearing none. The voting devices will be open. Okay, I see five votes up there. It isn't?
It is.
Yeah, okay. Does anyone, would they like to change their vote? Hearing none. Mr. Pyatt, would you like to cast your vote at this time? Danny, you with us? Are you now unmuted?
Do a star six, Danny.
Yes.
Okay. Dustin, you put Danny's yes in, and you can now reveal the vote. And it passes. Board Action, number three, A, referendum ballot question options. I'll be looking for a motion. So based on that, because there are four options, somebody has to make a motion on one of the options so that we can discuss it.
So we just need to motion it?
For the start, yes, so we can talk.
So that's, I would motion on the first one. And move from there.
Okay. It's option one, all components included. Just so it's on the record, I'm going to read it. Question, shall the Unified School District of Anago, Langley, Shiano, and Marathon Counties, Wisconsin be authorized to issue pursuant to Chapter 67 of the Wisconsin statutes, general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $54 million for the public purpose of paying the cost of a school building and facility improvement project consisting of: Construction of a new elementary school, related site improvements and possible land acquisition, improvements for the relocation of the district offices, capital maintenance and building and infrastructure improvements at the middle and high schools, and acquisition of furnishings, fixtures, and equipment. So that's the motion that is on the floor. Would you like to speak to your motion at this time?
Well, I just think the first one meets all our needs. It includes the, it includes central office, moving that. Gosh, that'd be nice. It's about time.
Well, I know that-
I don't, I guess, but I'm open to suggestions, but that was-
I know that the Task Force One had that the Door Street was supposed, we were supposed to do something to get them out of our current spot. I don't think it was ever discussed at Task Force Two. So at this time, I'm going to throw it out to Jake, so he can talk specifically about Door Street. And there, just for all of you, the Quarles attorney is also here, so that if we have questions for-
Yes.
Her.
Okay, so when it comes to the central office, it was identified pretty heavy in the first Task Force and put in the resolution of their, I don't know if resolution is the right word, but their recommendation in a formal document that the board did accept. And it read, Unified School District of Anago Board of Education should develop a solution to address the deteriorating condition of the aged central office building. A relocation of the central office building to an existing school building can help to reduce costs for maintenance. So that was kind of the directive that Task Force Two worked under to fulfill the recommendations within Task Force One. So it wasn't focused on a lot. I think that, you know, the primary concern is the educational facilities for the kids. But it was also understood pretty heavily with the Task Force members that any solution should include the elimination of the current Door Street building that houses central office. What exactly that would look like is we would find a location at the existing properties, or the remaining properties, if a successful referendum goes through, to house the central office staff. That could look like a number of things. We kind of wanted to leave that as a kind of a, not the primary job of this referendum. Again, it's to address the educational facilities. And then wherever those best align, we use the remaining options to find the best solution for central.
Thanks. Any questions for Jake?
Probably, but not quite yet.
Okay. Who else would like to speak to the motion for option one?
Are we foreseeing the need of land acquisition?
Jake?
So we do have the purchase agreement with the property to the north. If you think back at how we structured the closing date of that, we chose the closing date to be determined by the district no later than July 2nd of 2025. That gave us an opportunity to get through the Task Force work, and it also gave us opportunity to align different fiscal year budgets to cover that. So we have the option to close anytime and use whatever funds we want to with that. When you look at how we worded this question, if we don't put possible land acquisition in there, it would not allow us to use any referendum dollars for the acquisition of the land.
So this would be for the land that we have already discussed? So not any more additional land, just for-
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, and as Ms. Oginski said, Representative from Quarles and Brady is on. They want to speak to that, or if I misspoke.
That makes sense. I just wanted, I was just making sure it wasn't anything additional.
Can you remind us what the cost is of the land acquisition?
Yep. The roughly about $400,000 was the total purchase price. The details to the land contract are the first payment would be $150,000 due on closing. And then for the next five years, we'd have a $50,000 a year payment.
Say that again, Jake?
It's approximately $400,000 total purchase price. $150,000 would be due at closing, and then $50,000 a year for the next five years.
So what would, so if we went with option one, that included the land acquisition and moving central office, what would that leave us for the building of a new school as well as furnishing it with fixtures and all that stuff?
So question one doesn't necessarily mean that we have to use the 50, it gives us the ability to use $54 million, okay? That is the budgetary numbers that Blue Design Group helped us work through to do the new elementary school, and then the first, the most immediate needs on the capital maintenance list. We are putting possible land acquisition in there in case the board elects to use referendum dollars for that. I think that that would be a discussion that we would have to have based on where the bids come back in to do the construction. And then also with the cost for whatever we do with central office, I think that that is going to be kind of at the end of the bidding of the projects. Figure out where we are, if there's space in this building, or there's space at the middle school, whatever that might look like, then we're going to look at possible light remodeling or things like that. The key is, in speaking with Quarles and Brady, if we do not have that in there, we would not be able to spend a single penny on that. So that's really the point of having that there. It's not so much that it's going to be a high line item or anything like that. You know, we still have to be accountable to make sure that we do all the scope that we have said would be in those estimates. It's more so just if we don't put that in there, it could create the illusion that, that we're not going to move central, or we're not going to include that in the project. You know, we want to clearly identify that with the public so that they know that this solution in this referendum, it will include the relocation of that central office. That's really more important than the money necessarily.
Okay, so has there been talk about putting in the central office into the new elementary, if it does pass? Because you were saying that they would move to like the middle school or-
It, we have not drawn up anything for any of the buildings. I was just using that as an example.
Okay, and then if we were to move central office, we would keep the warehouse that's there, or would that-
For a short term, I would really like to keep that warehouse till we get kind of settled into the three buildings. I think that there's a number of things that I can do supply chain wise, especially with a bigger, bigger building for the elementary. It has appropriate storage space and things like that, that we can manage inventory better on site. When you look at our elementaries, that really isn't an option. So once we get settled into three main buildings, if this were to pass, I think that we could find some ways to manage that inventory much better, and then look to eliminate that in the subsequent years, but not immediately.
Okay, thank you.
Jill, you haven't spoken yet. Would you like to?
My struggle is, I'm not opposed to option one by any means. This feels just exceptionally low today, I'm sorry. My struggle is that it, our history of inability to pass referendums, along with several other districts, that's not unique to us. My struggle is that our survey was really insightful and provided a lot of information, but historically, feedback within the community is the board's not transparent. We're not in favor, they're not transparent. I feel like this is starting us off on that path because there was so much detail, and I really appreciated the work going, that went into the survey. This feels like, see, now they're doing it, now they're adding, adding. So for that reason, I'm worried and I'm curious on feedback on how we're marketing the transparency component. I guess that's where my struggle is, and I appreciate, I had Kristen's question too, so I appreciate you asking that and your feedback on the land acquisition.
So I think it was included just when we were meeting with Allison from Quarles, who is available to answer questions as well. But it was brought up, as you may recall, with the first Task Force, and it was kind of like the understood, that building has to go because of the added expense it is to the district just to, just for the utilities alone, and the situation that, you know, the condition of the building as well. But I agree, we definitely don't want anyone to feel like this isn't transparent. It was just, my understanding of it was, everyone knows it has to go, and it should be part of this process, and it was kind of like an overall agreement, and nothing else was said more about it.
Because we don't anticipate a financial, a significant financial cost when we're looking at the overall.
Correct, and it would be like the last on the list. So if we were getting to a place where there wasn't enough money, then we would have to do something else. I mean, it would be the lesser expense options. But when we were working through the questions, she just told us that if it's a consideration that, you know, any $1 is used for it, it has to be in the language.
And I, this is Allison, if you can, of Quarles and Brady, I can jump in here. I didn't mean to interrupt or anything, but that's absolutely right. It gives flexibility, you know, in how the proceeds are spent, where if there is that chance that, you know, some of the referendum proceeds might be spent on the relocation of the district offices, or, you know, potentially towards the land acquisition, that it's good to include that. Point about transparency, just so voters see that, you know, right in, in the ballot question.
And to go on record, then, we already voted with the land purchase. We have already, from the, from the finance side of things, we are prepared for that. We don't, we aren't seeking our firm to fulfill the agreement with the seller. So I'm going on record to say that and confirm that. Maybe Jake, if you could go on the mic and confirm that too?
Yes, the terms of the offer to purchase were accepted by both sides, and that purchase is not contingent on anything, certainly not this referendum passing.
Or funding from it, yep, okay. So again, it's just flexibility within this process.
Danny, you haven't spoke yet. You're the only one on the boards who hasn't besides me. So you're up if you want to speak.
I am in favor of this option one, because it does give us the flexibility to include the central office. I agree with Allison, because if we use, were to use a miniscule amount of money from the referendum, $54 million, and if it's not included, there could be some problems down the road with that. Like Jill, I would like to also go on record and say that the land acquisition is a different, it's different because it's not, this money is not going to be used for that in the event, unless there is a problem where we need to. Does that make sense? So it gives that flexibility in there for both of those issues in the event of needing any of that $54 million. But I'm of the firm opinion that we need to stick with what we have discussed with the building of the elementary school first, and then what it takes to do the minimal maintenance issues at the high school, the middle school, and then evaluate as to where we are later. And we'll get those numbers from, from Architect Engineer once the bids go out, if I'm sending Jake correctly.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, before I start the board through the second time, Allison, is there anything at this point you'd like to add?
I think honestly that covered, you know, what I wanted to touch on, you know, maintaining that flexibility is really what option one provides, to be able to use referendum proceeds for all those purposes stated, because at the end of the day, you know, the proceeds have to be spent for the purposes set forth in the ballot question. So everything kind of works, you know, back from there, you could say.
Okay. Anybody on the board like to speak at this time? Angie?
I just want to say, I can appreciate, you know, the transparency and legality of having this verbiage on the question. My concern is, is that this also could be perceived as, okay, so now they added all this stuff on here, and it's going to take away from the actual build of the elementary school. So then we wouldn't have such a great, you know, facility that was built. So I just want to make sure that it is noted that our communications team, the Donovan Group, as well as the Task Force, anybody else talking about this, needs to make it very clear to our community that that is not the case. That this, the add-ons are not going to take precedence over the building. That's all I want to say.
Yep, I agree.
I will say, I appreciate that the central office discussion has not been a highlight, because that shows where the focus is on the learning environments and the need. So in that capacity, I'm very appreciative to it. And I think that's a point that remains highlighted. In addition, that's our least priority on the list. But I'm in full support that that office, that building is a health hazard, along with our current elementary school. So I'm in favor of something different, and also just being very open and clear that our elementary learning environments are most important. The capital improvements at middle school and high school are a priority. And that's been our focus, that's all.
Anyone else?
One more thing I would like to add to this discussion is the fact that our central office is not ADA accessible in any fashion.
True.
I just want to make sure that we can all be clear on which option we're voting on. I mean, it's obviously, but I just want to make sure that that is stated, that we're voting on option one.
Yes. Option one was what I read. I said it was option one, and I read it, so everybody would hear it. Yes, that is true.
Okay.
Scott, did you want to further comment?
No.
Kristen? Okay. Everybody has had their say. The voting device is now open. We're voting on option one. Okay, I see, one, two, three, four, five up there. Okay, Danny, your vote.
My vote is yes.
And I forgot to ask if anybody wanted to change your vote, but that's still an option for those at the table. Is this in, Dustin? Okay. The vote is now closed, and it passes unanimously. Okay, we are to, Item B, Second Reading of Policy 2340, District Sponsored Trips. Need a motion?
I move the board approve the second reading for policy 2340, District Sponsored Trips.
Jill, would you like to speak to your motion?
No, thank you.
Is there anybody at the board level that would like to speak to it? As I look at it, I only see one thing in green, which states, extracurricular trips that extend to an overnight stay are considered overnight travel other than WIAA athletic teams participating in state tournaments/meets. And then at green, it says, including regionals, sectionals, and any other postseason meets. Any overnight tournaments, meets will need permission from Athletic Director and Building Administrator. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Dustin, the voting device, excuse me? Oh, the voting devices should be open. Would anyone like to change their vote? Danny?
My vote is yes.
We are now closed. Dustin, you can reveal it, and it passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is Board Action C, First Reading of Neola Update Policies, Compliance Officer Updates for Nondiscrimination Policies. I need a motion.
I move the board approve the first reading of the Neola Update Policies for Compliance Officer Updates for Nondiscrimination Policies.
Jill, would you like to speak to your motion?
No, this is just on committee, I believe, if there's anybody that was there, like to speak to it.
It's just updating the proper personnel.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further comments? Okay. Dustin, please open the voting devices. Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing none, Danny?
My vote is yes.
Dustin, you can reveal the vote. It is closed, and it passes. Next is Item D. First Reading of the Policy 7540.04, Staff Technology Acceptable Use and Safety Revisions. I'm looking for a motion.
I move the board approve the first reading of Policy 7540.04, Staff Technology Acceptable Use and Safety Provisions.
Jill, would you like to speak to your motion?
No.
Anyone else at the table like to talk about the motion? Okay, hearing none. Danny?
My vote is yes.
Oh, no, no, no. I wanted to know if you were going to speak to the motion. I'm sorry. So I'll take that as a no. And Dustin, voting devices are now open. And based on Mr. Pyatt's voice, you can put it in, Dustin. Anyone like to change your vote? Hearing none. It is now closed. Dustin, you can reveal it, and it passes. Item E. First Reading Policy 2264, Title IX, Nondiscrimination on the Basis of Sex in Education Programs or Activities. I'm looking for a motion.
I move the board approve Policy 2264, Title IX, Nondiscrimination on the Basis of Sex in Education Programs or Activities as presented.
Jill, would you like to speak to your motion?
This did come to committee. We talked about it briefly, but I'm linking in the discussion at the moment.
So this is to be in alignment with federal laws, and it will have to have a, if approved, a second read, because it has to be in place August 1st, because some of the procedures have changed with how we do the investigation. Along with, we still will have the same compliance officers, but it can primarily rest on one person first doing the investigation instead of two people being involved. And then there's also included in the board documents some drafting information that was also received from one of the earlier school districts, I believe, Lowdi, that had gone through the policy procedure and was willing to share their information with other Neola districts as well.
Any further discussion on this first reading of the nondiscrimination policy?
Yes. I'm wondering how- Yes, I'm wondering how this affects gym locker rooms as well as sports?
Can you be more specific?
I guess if, I guess I'll just put it out there, are we going off the basis of sex is determined by birth, or are we going off of, I'm going to ask the elephant, the question, you know, the elephant in the room question? Because I know we've had some issues in the past and have had some problems.
So I would like to call on Mr. Schofield and ask him if he is aware of anything through WIA regarding anything to, my thoughts are it's going to be based on gender at birth? If that's your question?
That is, yeah.
About the locker rooms?
Yes.
But are you talking locker rooms only during the school day?
Sports and fight classes.
Okay.
So I can talk on the sports end. For the WIA, there is a checklist of things that have to be done in order for somebody that has, that is identifying differently, that has to go through a lot of different steps in order, including counselors and doctor appointments and everything else in order to actually be allowed to participate in a different sex or gender sport.
Okay.
So.
What about the locker rooms?
The locker rooms, as of right now, they, there really is, we've never had in sports-wise anything that really has had anybody that identifies go into a different locker room. I can't speak on behalf of Fiyat.
Okay. Thank you.
But just to be clear, this is more based on sexual harassment, the Title IX policy is?
Sure, but that also ties into, again, gym locker rooms during fight, you know, gym class.
Right. Well, the Title IX policy is all about the procedure and the process in which we investigate that and the, the process thereafter. I just wanted to be clear about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions on this policy? Hearing none. We have a motion on the floor to approve the first reading. And so Dustin, voting devices should now be open. Anyone like to change their vote? Danny?
My vote is yes.
Thank you. Dustin, put it in and reveal. Vote is now closed. And it passes.
I'm in one other follow-up. Because we do have to have a second read, it is likely that we will do a virtual meeting so that everyone doesn't have to travel in because the only agenda item would be for the second read for the Title IX policy. Because that has to be in place, board-approved by August 1st, because there's differences in the procedures of investigation. So you have to be thorough in the investigation prior to that and then have the new procedures in place after, on or after August 1st. Okay?
We're moving to item F, wrestling mat. As the sitting chair here, I'm the only one that was in the, in the meeting for, the committee meeting for this, and technically I'm not supposed to make a motion. So I'm going to ask Scott, would you make him read the motion for the group?
I move to approve the board purchase the wrestling mat for the practice room for the price of $14,425, in which the wrestling club will pay the Unified School District of Hannegale prior to the purchase.
Would you like to speak to your motion?
No, I think they need a wrestling mat, so.
Okay, I will now speak about it. Mr. Schofield made the presentation to our committee. It is the wrestling club that is going to pay for it. There was a lesser amount that was quoted. However, this mat perfectly fits the need of the wrestling room and will provide, it has the proper circles for practice wrestling, and the other one did not, and did not fit exactly. Mr. Schofield, was, did I say that correctly?
Yes, there was one thing.
Okay.
That I needed to, what can we talk about?
Okay, no problem. And guess what? Just stay up there because I'll just turn it over to you next time.
Okay. So the amount, the lesser amount was for a competition mat. That was not the correct quote for the one that, for a practice mat. So the practice mat, other quote came in higher at $17,237.72. However, you had the right rationale of this one is seamless, this other one is not, and this one has all of the competition circles on it. So that had to just have been, that was a little error, but we got the right quote on to be the second quote for it.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. The voting devices are now open. Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing none, Danny?
My vote is yes.
My vote is yes.
Okay, Dustin has it in. We are now closed, Dustin, you can reveal it, and it passes. Item G is WIA Senior High Membership Renewal Application. Kristen, would you like to make that motion?
I move the board to approve the WIA Senior High Membership Renewal 2024-2025 season.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
No, I'll defer to you.
And I will, will do so to Mr. Schofield because there was some changes in this. This is something we normally do every year. It lists our sports, and I'll turn it over to Tom.
Yeah, so the application this year went from paper to electronic. Basically has the electronic listing out all of the sports that we provide here. It's the same sports that we have done in the years past. And then you just have to mark off by the superintendent that read over all of the senior high handbook agreements of the WIA. And then we move forward and we continue to be WIA-sponsored for all of our athletics.
Any comments? Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Hearing done. Dustin will open the devices. Would anyone like to change their vote? Hearing none, Danny?
My vote is yes.
My vote is yes.
And Dustin, you can reveal it. And it passes. Okay, we are to, I went down too far. Item H, Fund 46 Transfer. Angie, could you make this motion for me?
I move the board approves the Fund 46 Transfer, approximately $2.5 million.
Okay, so the motion is on the floor. Angie, would you like to speak to your motion at this point?
No.
Okay, Kelly, the floor is yours.
All right, I do, I do have all this information in the topic summary sheet, so for your reference and for the public's reference as well. But just a background, I know we've talked about Fund 46 a lot in the past, but 40, Fund 46 is also known as the Long-Term Capital Improvement Trust Fund, which is a special fund that's established by school districts to save for capital, future capital projects that are aligned with your 10-year capital improvement plan, which is approved by the board every year. This fund also allows districts to plan and save for significant capital expenditures such as building renovations or major maintenance projects over a period of years. The purpose for Fund 46 is to provide a stable financial strategy for managing long-term capital needs without resorting to borrowing or increasing taxes unexpectedly. So before determining the amount of the transfer to Fund 46, all district expenses must be finalized and accounts balanced. This involves ensuring that all financial obligations are met and that all revenues are accurately recorded. So only after closing the fiscal year and reconciling all accounts can a surplus of funds be identified. So the final transfer amount must be determined and approved by July 30th to meet the required deadline for the Fund 46 allocations. Just a reminder also, when you have Fund 40, when you have a planned surplus at the end of the year, you can do two things. One is you can put it into fund balance, the other is Fund 46. The key differences are, if you put it into fund balance, which has been done in the past, it will impact your state aid negatively. It won't be counted as an expenditure, therefore you will lose state aid and increase your mill rate and your tax levy negatively impacting just your taxpayers the next year. So I have some details regarding what all went into this year to determine what our Fund 46 transfer will be and why. So the Fund 46 transfer is rooted in an extensive effort to analyze and realign our entire budget. Several strategic and extremely time-sensitive steps have been executed in a short period of time since the end of August to realign the budget in order to leverage all of our state and federal grants, capitalize on additional funds created by interest gains, and maximize state aid to mitigate taxpayer impact, all while protecting the district from a deficit. Our objective is to align our budget with high-impact strategies aimed to optimizing our student achievement and then yielding significant academic return on our investment, and then addressing our urgent facility maintenance needs as we have seen through our task force work. Upon my hire at the end of August, our central office team immediately conducted a thorough audit. The audit of the budget revealed several critical issues that required immediate attention, including missing documentation and records. These measures were time-sensitive and very time-intensive. The key measures, if these key measures were not executed by June 30th, 2024, the district would have faced a significant deficit in our upcoming 24-25 school year and beyond. Millions of dollars of staff positions were created and filled with one-time grant funds, which could not be sustained once our grants expired at the end of June 30th. Additionally, there was $1 million that was earmarked for an expenditure for our window and door grant, our project, without a confirmed grant to support it. Furthermore, grant and taxpayer funds were not being allocated in a manner that would minimize taxpayer impact and maximize our state aid. The budget was also not aligned with our high-impact evidence-based strategies necessary to increase student achievement and address our urgent facility needs. There were also strategies that needed to be put into place to maximize interest gains. And additionally, there were hundreds of thousands of dollars of grant funds that were left unspent over the years that could have been utilized effectively. One of the first steps was to connect or conduct our thorough analysis of our current and historical budgets for all funds, including our state and federal grants. Extensive research was completed due to missing records to determine the existing plans in place for substantial excess unaligned spending that could have been canceled. We did an extensive amount of research conduct with our outside consultants and also with our building and grounds director, who was here during those times when these plans were developed. This review led to an elimination of several hundreds of thousands of dollars in services that were not aligned with high-impact student achievement strategies and our urgent facility maintenance needs. Throughout this budget, it was, again, discovered that there was a $1 million grant for the window project at the middle school that not, that had not been secured or guaranteed for the district to receive, yet plans were already in place to allocate these funds. Since the grant was not ultimately awarded, this situation posed a significant risk to the district's budget, potentially leading to a financial strain and the inability to fund the planned project or initiatives. To mitigate this risk, the non-aligned plans and expenses that did not contribute to increasing our student achievement were eliminated, and the funds were reallocated strategically to ensure the completion of the window project and to protect the district from facing a $1 million shortfall. During the audit, it also came to light that millions of dollars of staff positions had been created using one-time grant funds. Once these funds expired, the district would no longer be able to sustain these positions, potentially leading to a budget deficit. Staffing represents the largest portion of our overall budget, and the audit revealed that the records for staff positions did not exist, necessitating the development of a comprehensive documentation of all salaries, benefits, and staff, along with their positions. This effort involved meticulously working, reworking to align the staff and expenses with our high-impact strategies aimed at enhancing student achievement while avoiding a budget deficit in the 24-25 school year and beyond. Thorough audit of staff, their salaries, benefits, pay code, and their pay codes were undertaken to fill the critical gap of these district records and to ensure that our grants were fully utilized. Furthermore, several positions had been established using various temporary grants. Had these positions remain unfilled, they would have contributed to a significant budget shortfall upon the expiration of SRR3 grant funding in the next fiscal year. These strategic measures were instrumental in ensuring the responsible use of our available funds and maintaining the financial stability of the district. Following the creation of the staff documentation and pay codes being realigned to ensure that the expenditure of all federal and state grants and accumulated carryover were leveraged to support district goals, including student achievement and facility maintenance. Expenses were meticulously realigned to appropriate accounts to maximize grant utilization, thereby facilitating responsible allocation of our taxpayer funds towards our district objectives. Through the analysis of all state and federal grants, we ensured compliance with the very specific guidelines associated with each and proper expense allocation. Utilizing these grant funds maximized our state aid and federal funds, ensuring the responsible, fiscally responsible use of our taxpayer money to address both student outcomes and urgent facility needs. The audit also revealed that the district was at risk of losing millions of dollars in SRR3 funds because they were left unspent. The budget realigned, realignment ensured that all funds were properly used and expended, aligned to student, increasing student achievement and our facility needs, preventing the loss of these federal funds as of June 30th, 2024. Specifically, the $4.3 million of one-time SRR3 funds, which was allocated three years ago. So it wasn't 4.3 every year, it was actually an allocation of 4.8 and 4.3 million of that was not used up until we started in August, when we started spending it. So specifically, the $4.3 million of one-time SRR3 funds had been remained unspent since being allocated to the district three years ago. We were at risk of forfeiting these funds back to the state by the end of September. These funds were reallocated to effectively align our district goals and were used towards our critical capital projects, including our energy efficiency updates for windows and doors at the middle school, critical technology enhancements, and curriculum and instructional resources that focused on addressing the key gaps in reading, writing, science, and math skills. Another pivotal aspect of our budget realignment involved pursuing strategic investment opportunities that aimed at securing additional funding through these interest gains. These funds are earmarked to address urgent facility needs while also supporting our overall objective of enhancing student achievement. A critical, this critical component of our budget realignment strategy was to pursue strategic investment opportunities aimed at securing additional funding through these interest gains. The district currently utilizes WISC, which is Wisconsin Investment Series Cooperative, and PMA to invest long-term capital improvement Fund 46 funds into both liquid and fixed-rate investment instruments. Through a fixed-rate investment bidding process, the district is able to receive highly competitive yields while investing according to the anticipated future Fund 46 liability. yields while investing according to the anticipated future Fund 46 liabilities. Liquid funds are invested into WISC, money market pool to take advantage of the competitive yield, same day liquidity, or being able to use the funds the same day for upcoming liabilities, and then high level of service. In this year alone, the district gained $99,397.52 of interest that is earmarked for our facility needs. These funds are crucial for addressing our urgent facility gaps and then supporting our primary goal, again, which is student achievement. Furthermore, efforts are focused on maximizing our state aid, efficiently utilizing all of our state and federal grants, and ultimately minimizing our taxpayer impact. The Fund 46 transfer of an estimated $2.5 million marks a significant milestone in our commitment to responsible fiscal management and maximizing our academic return on investment while addressing our urgent facility needs. By reallocating these previously unspent grant funds and transferring funds to Fund 46, we are able to capitalize on interest accumulation and increase our district's state aid allocation, thereby reducing the impact on taxpayers. Future transfers of this magnitude are not likely due to the one-time nature of the $4.3 million in S R three funds. Again, our overarching goal is to align our budget to increase student achievement and support long-term facility maintenance. The strategic approach ensures responsible use of our taxpayer money while maximizing all of the state and federal grants, while safeguarding the, the financial stability of the district. Do you have any questions?
I have one.
Okay.
First of all, thank you because I know that was a huge undertaking, especially coming in new to the position and everything and then finding this out. Thank you so much for all your hard work. My question is, is we have been audited over years and we've all gotten the auditor's report. How was this missed by a third-party auditing agency that our funding was this messed up?
It's not necessarily that your funding was messed up. It's the, the strategy and strategic use of your budget to align with your district improvement goals. So you can budget many different ways, but how you budget and what you align your funds to can either maximize your state aid, maximize your mill rate, you know, it can increase your mill rate. It can be aligned to many different strategies. It can be not aligned to any strategies. It could be just however you would like to spend it at the building, that's how we do it. So there's many ways to budget, and it's not that the auditors are ever going to tell you how to use your funds. They're going to make sure that you are using your funds in accordance with the law. And you can carry over funds such as S R three, but that's your district choice. If you get $4.8 million of S R three funds and they say you have to have it expended by September 30th, 2024, the auditors aren't there to tell you how to use it, when to use it, or anything else. It's just a matter of, are you using it in accordance with the guidelines? If you choose not to, and you choose to forfeit it, that is the district's choice. So it's not really the role of the auditors to come in and tell you how to strategically use your funds, it's just to make sure that you're following state and federal laws while spending district funding.
Okay, so we were not spending it strategically to maximize our state funding is what I'm hearing you say?
Based on the mill rate, based on the deposits into Fund 46, and based on the deposits into fund balance, the facts are that the mill rate increased based on those choices. And based on how funds were allocated to Fund 10, when they could have been allocate, which is your general fund, when they could have been allocated to achievement gap reduction grant funds, or Title I, or the various other grants that they have, those grant funds were being left unspent, meaning funds were being spent by taxpayer money that could have been used for facilities, which you can't generally use grant funds for, or things like that. So one of the things that our central office team really focused on was using every bit of grant funds that we possibly can in accordance with those rules, which frees up all of your general fund money to be able to use towards facilities or things that those grants don't allow. So instead of using, leaving grant funds unspent and spending our Fund 10, we're able to reallocate those to maximize your grants, and then be able to maximize your Fund 46 transfer, which allows you to, to use it for facilities and gain interest as well as being able to increase that balance. So it produces a lot of flexibility while at the same time reducing your mill rate. So.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
And I know the budgeting is, and funding is very complex.
Mm-hmm.
But in long story short, the answer would be yes, we have not used it strategically. It's fine.
I'm saying we are using it strategically, but I'm not going to make any judgments on how past administration has used it because there's a lot of different things that I may or may not know about what their thought process, where behind things.
I understand that, but the community wants to know, how in the world did we ever get to this? You know, and it, and it wasn't just one per, I mean, it's been years, I mean, lot, years and years and years and years of, of things, so, yeah.
And I think a lot of it still yet goes back to the philosophical beliefs of how money is used, you know, and that typically is left up to administration and the board, whether you feel that all the money should be allocated to the buildings, or is it centralized? What does your purchasing look like and how strategic you are with that? And like Ms. Fosbender said, freeing up those Fund 10 dollars gives you a lot more flexibility with what you can do with them.
Sure.
You know, but I think the biggest thing is making sure that you have leveraged all your federal grants and all your federal dollars so that you have any, any remaining money can go to a Fund 46 so that it's lessening the, the tax impact.
Sure.
For our community.
Mm-hmm. And you can always look, I mean, one of the things that our central office team looks at is what are your district goals? And how is, how can you show with data that your budget, whatever your budgeting practices are, or the director of curriculum, whatever her strategies are in increasing student achievement, are those really working because you're using goals to measure the impact of what your strategies are? And that's one of the things that we are doing to ensure that the strategies we're doing is increasing student achievement and meeting the needs of our facilities, which we all agree are needed.
Yes, again, thank you. I know it was a huge undertaking and a lot of work, so thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Joe?
Yes. This is a lot of work, so thank you, Kelly. My first response is that the, the school board, doesn't matter who's on it, what year ultimately approves what we do with the budget. And I appreciate the way in which you didn't directly answer Angie's question, although frustrating, but the flip side is ultimately every business director and department has a different philosophy on what's best for the district. So I don't doubt that prior administrators and boards, including myself and prior votes in previous years, made a decision based on the information presented that was believed to be in the best interest of the district. That said, I appreciate the strategies and using data to back your decision-making. I think that's a very helpful tool that is just raw data and objective, so I appreciate that. I have two questions. First is, and I don't even know if it's specific for you, or maybe go onto our admin team. It concerns me that we have records that we're missing. So within this process, that's taxpayer dollars. We're paying you to have to find records or, or investigate time for records that are missing. I'm not asking the why or how that happened, I'm asking, are there safeguards now in place moving forward that we shouldn't have records being misplaced or gone? How do we move forward from there?
So I think that's a great question, because it is, it is a lot of added time, and we're all very much ready to go and move forward and have impact right out of the gate, so to speak. But we had a lengthy admin meeting today for central office, and our new tech director, Kesha, was involved with that as well. And looking at processes for just onboarding staff, we left the meeting today feeling like, okay, we have a solid plan in place of how we're going to keep up with the documentation, and who's going to get what, and how it's going to move down the line to make sure that all of our employees are being on-boarded correctly, and that we have the correct documentation that we need. So a lot of it is developing and creating systems that maybe were in place, but they weren't written anywhere, and no one may have followed them or may not have. But it is, you know, each day is a new day, and we're finding and discovering other things. But as we have these realizations, we are instantly working to improve those, to put things in place, because I am a firm believer that all effective systems, districts, businesses, are not dependent upon a person being there to run it. It is dependent upon a system in place so that if no one shows up and a whole new crew comes in, there's a system that everyone should be able to access, jump in, and keep the ship moving forward. So those are some of our focuses this year, moving forward, to make sure that we have that. But yes, a lot of taxpayer dollars were spent on a lot of hunting and searching and looking and just trying to recreate something so that we had access to the information we needed.
Thank you. My second question is, can somebody share examples of high-impact evidence-based strategies? I think those are really fancy words, they sound great, but what does that mean? Because I think we're here to focus on student achievement. So can you share, anybody on the floor, what that means? Doesn't have to be in super, a lot of detail, but just what does that mean to the parents or the taxpayers?
Sure. I think that's a great question. And through the S R funds, a lot of the money was supposed to be allocated toward evidence-based strategies that are going to have a positive impact on student achievement. So like Ms. Stuttrimer is working through a math vetting process this year because we need updated resources, and that is an evidence-based strategy. If you have old outdated resources that teachers are using in the classrooms, clearly we need to be updated. And right now, our math resource is very, very old. So, and that's only through fifth grade, so that's, that's one component. Also, a lot of work with the new ELA resource that was adopted when we all came in. Ms. Stuttrimer also worked through getting some additional professional development, and that is continuing and ongoing. So there is plans for, it's not ever a one-and-done, so that staff still have that continuation of that support, because after you've used a resource for a year, then you really have some very good educated questions to ask, and you can dive more into specific strategies. So updating our resources, other things I'm not thinking of.
High quality.
Sure, sure.
And I do think this also shows an example of how the administrative team is working to balance their budget and work together to align with district goals and strategies too, because I mean, it's demonstrating that you each have a, a part in it.
So another part is the professional learning and the building capacity of our teachers. It's okay to put a great resource in front of people, but if we don't have the capacity and our teachers are gaining that and have a lot of knowledge to be able to help instruct and create engaging opportunities for our students, then that resource goes nowhere. So as we look at our data around our screener, which is FastBridge, and our ACT scores, our pre-ACT scores, our forward scores, which are state assessments, that really drives where our gaps are, not only with our student achievement, but with our teaching capacity. So some of the professional learning in August and throughout this school year will identify gaps for teachers as well, on just where we need to improve. For example, Act 20 coming up has a lot of learning that's going to be around sound walls, explicit brain research of how kids learn to read. When I went to school, they did not teach that component of it. They were teaching still the system of three-queuing, looking at the picture, trying to guess what the word means. We know that now, and with our brain research around kids and how they read, we need to update how we're providing instruction to students, and that's some of the learning that our K through third-grade teachers through Act 20 will have the knowledge around. So it's all the components of the resources, instructional practices that our teachers are doing, how we leverage those, and how we build capacity for our teachers helps retain them as well. Because if I'm a teacher who's getting support and feeling like I have the capacity to teach, I'm going to stay in a district where I feel like I am making an impact, right? All of our teachers, I can speak for all of them, and they're probably watching thinking, oh goodness, what is she going to say? But I can speak for every teacher in this district that they come to this job because they want kids to do well. They want everything they do to have a positive impact on kids and affect their futures and be able to watch our students move into the future after high school and say, I had a part in looking how great that kid is doing and how successful. That's why teachers come, and if we can leverage that and make them feel because they are making an impact every day, then that will retain teachers as well. We also have instructional coaching. That's another component that is a high-leverage strategy, because as teachers, we do what we know. We can get professional learning, we can have new resources, but that embedded coaching of somebody coming in and watching me teach from a different lens and being able to provide some feedback, whether it's administrator or an instructional coach, can really help me build my capacity as a teacher. Because they point out things that I don't see as a up in front, doing my thing, being the teacher in charge, doing what I need to for my students, but they can leverage some of those pieces for us, help us look at data, help us triangulate data, and make sure we're making data decisions in our teaching. But that instructional coaching program as well is one of the better ones in the area, and we're hoping to continue to build that to help support our teachers.
Thank you. That's all I had for questions.
Any other questions? Okay, what, I'm, before we vote, I'm just going to say a couple things. And thank you, Joe, for what, what you said about the team, and that's where I was going to go. We need to remind the community that it, that this board hired Mrs. Oginski. And we trust her, and we are glad she's here. And at the same time, we trusted her to put the Door Street team together. And I've been in meetings where they've talked about things, and it's truly Glenda's team. And when we're talking money, finances, they all have input. Yes, Kelly has to do the job to make the budget work, and you did a great job, but it's a team. And as we go forward, we have now new principals, a new special ed director, and again, these are Glenda's choices to improve our district. And I just want to say that we made a good decision as a board when we hired the superintendent. Lastly, I'm shocked. We received $4.8 million of S R funds three years ago. And going into this year, after two years of spending, apparently the district spent $500,000. To me, that's all the, I'm just guessing, all those positions that they asked us to approve that we did with the caveat that, hey, when S R funds are over, you're not going to be here. Well, you take all the people that we hired and take their salary and fringe, I'm pretty sure it's probably pretty, pretty close to that $500,000. So for this team to come in here and suddenly realize, I'm not even going to say what the percentage is, I haven't done that in my head yet, but $4.3 million on the table that has to be spent in 13 months, or we lose the money. Amazing. The other thing, Jake, the motion that was made said approximate $2.5 million, and for the public, again, there's a reason why it's approximate. Bills are still coming in that are being paid for that were done in the last school year, which ended June 30th. However, the amazing thing about Fund 46 is that Kelly has till July 30th to decide what our final number is, based on what has come in by that date. She can't wait till July 31st, because then we can't move the money to 46, but July 30th is the magic date, and when that, all the receipts have come in by that time, she will know exactly what we will be moving to Fund 46. Could be a little lower, or it could be a little higher, depending on what comes in. So again, thank you. So, again, thank you to all, to Kelly and to all on the team, and especially to Mrs. Oginski. So, with that, the voting devices are now open.
You didn't get Danny's?
No, I haven't got mine. Mine didn't go in. There it goes. Anyone like to change your vote? Hearing none, Danny?
My vote is yes.
And Dustin has it in, so Dustin, you can reveal our vote. And it passes. We are two. I, payroll date change. Scott, I can't make this motion, so could you make this one for us?
I move the board, I move the board to approve payroll dates as presented.
Would you like to speak to your motion? What came to us, and I'll just give it, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Oginski, but what came to us is that because of the changing calendar over years, what happens is if you don't change the calendar at the administrative level for payroll, you have people who work, oh, wait a second, no, they haven't worked. They get paid their first paycheck and they haven't worked a day. And then if they leave the district, you're trying to get the payroll back. So, the idea is that you move it, and people who are teachers especially are looking at, thinking they're going to get a payroll in two weeks at the end of August, they're probably going to go three weeks without that check, because you got to change the dates so that, and personally, I'm not sure what they're doing here, what, how big a move, but back in the days at Whitburn, I made sure people worked two weeks before they got their first paycheck, which was, huh, based on two weeks. Okay. And I'll turn it over to Glenda.
Okay. And it is exactly that. We encountered some situations last year where staff left and they had received paychecks, and then it left us incurring either additional legal fees or having to garnish wages and a lot of additional time because of how our salary, pay scale dates are set up in Skyward. So, this motion is just to ask that we have the ability to push that back to where people are not getting paid before they're actually working.
Any questions? Hearing none? The voting devices are now, excuse me? Oh, yeah, I know that. Voting devices are now open. Would anyone like to change your vote? Hearing none, Danny?
My vote is yes.
Okay, Dustin, you can put it in and reveal it. And it carries. Item J, 2024-25 Academic Standards, I'll be looking for a motion.
I move the board to approve the academic standards for the 2024-2025 school year.
Kristin, would you like to speak to your motion?
No need.
Any comments about it?
To committee, no changes to the standards.
Okay.
I do have a question. So, when teachers are using the different grading, whether it's Common Core or whether it's like the next generation's science standards, if you will, how does that turn into grades and GPA? Because colleges don't go off of needs expect, you know, six, or what I'm looking for.
Needs expectations.
Yeah. They don't go off of that. They're going off of the GPA, the actual grade point system. So, how are we, how is this not using, being most effective with our time, because now the teachers have to turn around and turn that back into a grade in order for GPA to become compiled?
So, I'm going to make a suggestion that perhaps we have that as a committee agenda item, because that has to deal with grading, and this is just approving the standards to be taught.
But it's part of the standards.
But...
Because she actually lists, like, each, each section is graded. Hang on, let me get back to it.
But the overall approval is for the, the standards that our teachers are going to be responsible for teaching. It's, it's a statute that we have to bring to the board every year for approval.
Yeah.
But we can talk about grading. That would be a great committee agenda item for the next committee and on to the board, if you would like.
Yes, I would.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions concerning this, the academic standards? Hearing none? The voting devices are now open. Would anyone like to change your vote? Danny?
My vote is yes.
Okay, Dustin, and you can reveal it. And it passes. Item K, North Lakes Community Clinic Dental Outreach Program, Seal a Smile, looking for a motion.
I move the board to approve the North Lakes Community Clinic Dental Outreach Program for Seal a Smile MOU as presented. I can speak on that.
Yes, you may.
Do that openly. Okay, that came to committee. I don't think there was any changes to the MOU. I was, we've utilized it in the past, so it's just bringing it back to continue that.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Hearing none? We can open up the voting devices. Anyone like to change your vote? Danny?
My vote is yes.
Dustin, you can reveal it. And it passes. L, High School Student Handbook. We need a motion.
I move the board to approve the recommended updates to the Annie Go High School Student Handbook as presented.
Kristin, would you like to speak to your motion?
It was, came to committee. We discussed some changes, just to have the same language throughout. Yeah, thorough discussion at committee, so.
Any comments or questions?
I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Boardman for coming in and making significant, taking significant time to review the handbook thoroughly and, and making some changes and edits to that. You've been with our district now 15 days officially, so that's a pretty huge task, and I think it's really important to acknowledge that appreciation. Go ahead, Andrew.
So, I was just curious, on, on page 10, we're talking about any refusal by a student to go to his or her assigned location will be resolved in the student being suspended for the remainder of the day and cross out as sent home. So, is that in school suspension then? Am I reading that correctly?
No, I just wanted to be really clear. Like, I'm not just sending you home. It's a consequence of being suspended. I don't want anybody to think they're just being sent home and it's not going on their record as a suspension.
Well, I guess I didn't realize that there was...
I mean, you...
You could just send them home without a suspension.
You can't legally, but that doesn't, I just don't want any parents to be like, well, she said they were going home. It says in the handbook they're going home. No, you're, you're suspended. So, I just, for transparency, really.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, no problem.
And then on page 30 with the positive acknowledgements, that whole section is, is scratched out, so like, are we, is the plan, do we know more of that, or?
No. The plan is definitely to be acknowledging things like honor roll and other positive things, except for I'd like to get the high school staff involved in that. And I am not in a position right now to know what is going to come down this year to say, this is what we're acknowledging and this is what we're not acknowledging. So, I was just looking for more leeway.
Sure. Okay. I was just wondering, because like the whole...
No, we're not, we're not doing away with it. I just, and the handbook is really long, so if there's something that doesn't necessarily need to be in there, we're still going to do positive acknowledgements. It's just going to look a little different.
Sure. I, I will say that I really like the behavioral section. I like the chart, get back up to it, that you, you came up with and put in here. So, I really like that, you know, and it very specifically lays out the expectations of the kids to not be disruptive, because not only does that hurt them, drives the teachers nuts, I'm sure, but then also impedes the other students from learning. So, thank you for, for doing that, making it very clear.
Thank you.
I do want to highlight that discussion I had with Ms. Boardman on that specifically. And I'm going to, again, give you a shout out with acknowledging that, and this board has talked about, and the community has been very concerned about behaviors. And in my conversation with Ms. Boardman, she focused on, we can't forget about 50% plus of our students that don't have bad behaviors.
Right.
And ensuring that we are holding high expectations to our students and that our staff are willing to fulfill those high expectations as well, but also recognizing kids are kids, and they're going to do silly things, and they're going to make mistakes. And that doesn't mean that they have to go from zero to, you know, worst outcome. That means that there's going to be a consequence. We're going to have a structure in place. Kids are going to be held accountable, but there's flexibility in that. So, it's not to say you get 50 free passes either before there's something. There, there's going to be, like you, you shared earlier, the language is important. You're not sent home, you're suspended.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So, I think that's really important, because the other thing that I hear in the community is we forget about the kids that are excelling academically. We're only talking about this target group of kids. We're only talking about the kids that are repeatedly getting in trouble. But I appreciate this fresh lens and focus of like, no, we're here to educate all students. So, I just, again, wanted to highlight that, because I think it's really important.
Thank you.
Can I say something? It kind of goes off of what Jill was saying.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
I was going to ask if there was any further, so, but okay.
So, to kind of go off of what you were saying, another concern that was coming up from the community was, you know, there was no, what's the word I'm looking for, consistency. You know, this student did this, and then they got this discipline, and then this student did this, and they got nothing, you know, stuff like that. So, that's, that's one thing we want to make sure that it's, I mean, I understand that, you know, things happen and, and there's extenuating circumstances sometimes, but we can't use that as a crutch either.
Absolutely. And you're 100% right. And I think there's a big difference between, like, for example, we know that fights are a huge issue in our building, right? And that's a big reason why kids don't want to come to school. So, there's a big difference between two high school boys talking about who has the better truck, and it gets heated in the lunchroom, and it's a one-time deal, than this is your third time, or you planned this out yesterday. So, I just, like, that's where the difference for me is. If there's contact made in a physical aggression sort of a way, everybody's going home, and there's probably going to be, well, suspended, right? And there's probably going to be disorderly conduct given. However, is it going to be more than that will depend on if it was premeditated, right? Like, you planned this last night over Snapchat, or if it was, you guys got heated because you were talking about whose truck was better, or something else that is unfortunately a little more typical of a high schooler and not has malicious, right? So, we need to make sure that accidents happen, and this is just an example that I'm using, but we need to make sure that has administration. We can use our discretion with that. But definitely, I mean, if you are bringing drugs into our school, and this is being said for anybody who is listening, they are not welcome here. You will not be staying here. That's, I think that's a fine line for me. Physical aggression is a fine line for me. It's more of, if you are tardy to three classes and a quarter, I want to be able to say, okay, well, you get a bunch of attention or something like that. Or maybe nothing, because it's three classes and you were just caught talking to a friend or something like that. If it's not a problem and it's a typical teen behavior, I want to be able to have those conversations or have the staff have those conversations, so we can use them as learning targets before we get to these huge escalated behaviors. One of the other things that we're doing is we've been gathering a list of students who really struggled last year, and we're going to have one-on-one meetings with those students and their families, or at least invite them in, right? Like, I can't make them come, but I'm going to do my best, and ask, what is going to help you get through school? Because one of the other things that we kind of know about kid development is these behaviors come out of shame and embarrassment because they can't do the work in the classroom. So, what do they need to be able to make that more successful before we even get started in the building? So, that's the other goal. We're kind of trying to compile that list with the best data that we can. I'm hoping that we don't miss anybody, so the other communication will be to families, if you want to come in and talk about something, please let me know, and we'll make time for that, because we want all of the students to feel like they have what they need before they start. So, those are some of the proactive and preventative measures that we're going to try to do this year, too. Yeah.
Great work already.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
I just, I want to say on page 15, when we're talking about transportation, and this goes for the high school and the middle school, and basically all in the elementaries too. I don't see, and maybe I just missed it, but I didn't see anything on there saying that if you're sus, if you're suspended off the bus, if you're starting, if you're like, you know, threatening other students, if you're really causing problems, you're, you know, fights, like very physical fights, stuff like that, and you're suspended off of the bus, that it is the parent's job to get this student to school. I mean, I don't see that anywhere in here. That's something I would like to see added, because a lot of times I know in the past I've heard on this board, well, you know, we feel like it's our responsibility to, you know, provide an education to, you know, whatever student that was causing or the students involved, but at some point, we have to think of the other student's safety. You know, and yes, they, they need to be in school, but involving the parents also makes them accountable for their children. Whatever else's thoughts are on that, but I would like to see that added in both, or in all handbooks.
I don't know if I'm allowed to say this. So, maybe you could recommend in the motion to add that sentence in, in both handbooks, because I don't think I can do that. Just, that would, that would be my off-the-record, record recommendation.
Okay.
Go ahead, make a motion.
Okay, so I'll make, do we, all right. I'll get back to my question. Okay, so I'd like to make the...
It's an amendment to the motion.
Amendment to the motion, to read, I move the board to approve the, or, sorry, hang on. Got to get to the right spot. Sorry. I, I move the board approve the recommended updates to the high school, Annie Go High School Student Handbook as presented.
Including...
Including, I don't know how you want me to word that. Parents will be responsible to bring their children to school if they are suspended off the bus.
Okay, we have a motion, actually, an amended motion on the floor that we need to address, which would be that added to the handbooks, that if a child is removed from the bus, that is the parent's responsibility to get them to school. Are there any discussions or questions about that amendment?
So, do we feel like this is already covered under Section A, Number 5? It reads, "Parents are encouraged to contact the building principal regarding any problems with school bus transportation. It is imperative that family, school officials, and bus drivers work cooperatively to solve any problems thus providing a safe ride and environment for all."
No. I feel like that's if, if you, if your child's coming home saying they're getting bullied on the bus, then you would be reaching out to the building principal regarding that problem on the bus.
So, if the bus driver tells you that you're no longer able to ride the bus, you, as a parent, aren't going to reach out to the principal? Because that's what I would see that sentence saying, because not being able to ride the bus would be a problem, and this teachers and the student, or the family.
The parents would be already involved, because if there's, if that, if it's escalated to that level, parents are called in to have a discussion with the building principal already. So, they know, and, right now, we don't address who's responsible for bringing the student to school. So, I feel like it's, it's part of, it's part of that. It's like the first step is what's listed, but we're, I think we need to add that final wording, so that people know their kid is, you know, your student is still expected to be in school if they're suspended off the bus, but it's the parent's responsibility to get them to school, whether it's find a ride or whatever, or they walk, whatever they decide. I feel like it just gives the district a little bit more teeth in curbing any kind of bus issues that we've been having.
Tina, do you have what her amendment was?
So, I have, I move the board to approve the motion as including, parents will be responsible to bring their students to school if their student is suspended off.
Okay, just so we're clear, we will be voting on her amendment, and then if that passes, we then have to vote... Okay, just so we're clear, we will be voting on her amendment and then if that passes, we then have to vote on it as the motion. So, any further questions?
So, do we know the legality of that? I mean, I, I'm just asking.
That's true.
It's a common practice unless a student has an IEP.
Yes.
And I'm not sure about 504s, but I know that if a student has an IEP, there's other ways to accommodate that, but it's a common practice.
That was my concern.
Yep.
I mean, that gets expensive too then if you gotta provide those guys with a car.
No.
When I taught special ed and my guys got suspended, they got transportation by a car.
And we would still have to do that.
Yes, we would still have to do that if a student has an IEP.
But this would refer to general.
Right, I'm just ma- I'm just
Yeah. That's a good question.
Jill?
I'm not disagreeing with your feedback by any means, where I'm just really struggling and grappling in my head is are there other areas that we need to go into the weeds more, you know, like we have to become more specific? Like, are we setting ourselves up for that? I feel like that's not, there's a word I want, but understood if you're suspended, you're not allowed on transportation. You still need to get your child to school. If you're, right, like
I think that's, yeah, that's clarity.
If you're not, if you're in lunch, if you're in lunch sus- or suspension, you're not allowed to go to the lunchroom. Right, like, so I feel like now we're just kind of really becoming really precise, which is not bad, but then are we missing out in other areas in the handbook that's already forty pages long? So that's what I'm grappling with.
So if you're suspended, are you automatically suspended from the bus too? Or are we just talking about being suspended from the bus?
I think we're just talking about bus suspensions, because you can be just suspended from transportation and not from school, right? I can't think of another situation like that. And when you are in general suspended, you're not allowed on school grounds for that time.
Well, I think that, and I'm not trying to put words in, into, you know, into anybody's mouth, but like, I don't know if that's come up in the past where, you know, like a bus driver has said, you know, I would recommend suspending. I'm just using this as an example. And the district says, well, we have a duty to get this student to the school, so we don't want to just, you know, suspend because of that. And I feel like if we just had that verbiage in this, you know, it g- it gives us more teeth, like I said, because we have, we have serious problems that are, have occurred on the buses. And I feel like it would make parents more comfortable, bus drivers more comfortable. You know, just to add that clarity and expectation.
So I just want to be clear that bus drivers don't suspend kids from
Right, but they can recommend.
They can recommend, but that's the obligation of our building administrators, they take care of that. I just didn't want people to think that bus drivers are just out kicking kids off of the bus.
Oh, no, 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 no.
That's not what happens. And there is constant, there's communication from the building administrator with the family that when this happens, that they then are responsible to get transportation for their student to school because the attendance except, expectations have not changed just because they have been prohibited from transportation for a period of time, the rest of the year, whatever that may be. And I am not sure, is there other information at one time? I feel like we had a, a yellow half sheet that went home with all the bus rules that all families had to sign. Is there something like that that still goes home to, to our families to sign? And in that it also clearly states that if they are suspended from the bus, then they are responsible to transport them? Do we have that anymore?
We do send it home.
Okay.
I don't know if the high school requires their students to return the sheet, but maybe that'll be something like through the technology agreement or use or something.
Right, online registration process.
Because there's sports busing, you know, athletic and clubs busing as well, so.
Right, good point.
I guess I feel like if, if it comes from the board and it's, you know, saying, hey, we want you to add this, then our building principals will know, okay, the board is agreeing, you know, if there's serious issues with a student that it's okay to suspend them from the bus, to separate them from, you know, the other students that are getting harassed or, you know, whatever. I, I just think it, it would add more teeth and if, if it's, hopefully it's not needed. You know, hopefully it's not, I mean, because it's up to the building principals to actually do the suspension, so. But I, I just feel like it would help set the expectations and provide clarity to both parents and and the district as a whole.
Any other comments?
I'm just, I feel like it's essentially stating that we aren't already doing that, which is my, another struggle. Because that's incurring in order to notify a parent guardian. I mean, you're notifying them to let them know that the expectation is, we shared is, you're still expected to be at school. This doesn't give a free pass for an excused absence tomorrow. It's your responsibility to make arrangements, so I feel like it's I'm hearing, I'm just struggling with, is it?
So then what would be the big deal of adding it in the handbook?
What I shared earlier of like, now are we setting ourselves up to go in the details, other areas throughout the handbook? Because it's not in, in there. I'm not disagreeing with your feedback by any means, I'm just sharing mine, I guess.
Well, we've talked a long time, so I'm going to say at this point that we're gonna have the voting device open. We are only talking on the amendment at this point if we're going to add Angie's language to the main motion. Would anyone like to change their vote? Danny?
He's still on?
Danny? Are you gonna vote on this?
I don't know if you can hear me, the internet is really, really
Okay, we are.
But if you're voting on the amendment, my vote is no.
Okay. Okay, Dustin, all six are in and it fails. So we now move back to the original motion that was stated, I move the board approve the recommended updates to the Antigo High School Student Handbook as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we are now voting on the original motion. Dustin, open it up. Anyone want to change their vote? Danny? Mr. Pye? He's talking, but we can't hear him.
He's muted still.
Okay, I think I'm back on. I, I don't know what we're voting on right now, so I'll have to abstain from this vote.
It's a regular motion, Danny. I move the board approve the recommended updates to the Antigo High School Student Handbook as presented.
Okay, I heard all of that, thanks Dave, my vote is yes. I'm trying to get the phone number to call in.
Okay, Dustin, all six are in, you can reveal it, and it passes. Okay, we are to the M, gee, and it's M, Middle School Handbook, need a motion.
I move the board approve the recommended updates to the Antigo Middle School Student Handbook as presented.
Kristen, would you like to speak to your motion?
Ms. McCann did a lot of work last year. We did, again, some updating on the language to keep it all the same throughout. Nothing else.
Any further discussion on the middle school handbook?
Just echoing what Kristen said, that Ms. McCann and Mr. Mack both worked pretty extensively last year on these updates and focusing on just consistency with language and approaches. Go ahead.
And consistency with the high school.
Yes, sorry, that's what I meant, yes.
Go ahead, Angie.
You said it's in sync with the high school?
They worked very hard to have consistent language throughout the middle school and the high school so that there wasn't changes from one handbook to the next.
Okay. I guess, as I'm reading it, I don't, I don't see that, so like page seven should, in my opinion, should match the high school's expectations of academic, expectations of students. The dress code on page eleven doesn't match. Page twenty-three is, is there in the middle school, but it's not in the high schools. Truancy, middle school is at five days, high school is at three days, and maybe there's a reasoning for that, I don't, I don't know. Maybe there is. For truancy?
Yeah.
The middle school is at five days before you're considered truancy?
That's a state law.
Yeah, I was gonna say, all truancy, truancy is district-wide, so that is something that we can check into if it's, if it's different. But there's a truancy process for everyone with the same set of, number of days.
That, yeah, and that would make sense. Like I said, I was, I was reading it was middle school was five days and then high school was three days per semester, I think it was.
Well, there's medical days and there's
Yeah, unexcused, yeah, unexcused absence.
So these would be like fully unexcused, no medicals, no excuse, no return calls, no appointments, no nothing.
Okay. So, I just know that, you know, the days are different, so I just wanted to play that out. Because I, I agree.
Teal has it down to a T. Now he'll be working with the high school as well, like him and Jessica Kapatsky and social workers, I meet weekly. Have it, got a really good process, and I will work through some more procedures too.
Okay.
And you have some age differences too.
But
Yeah.
You have age differences.
Yeah, I didn't know if that came into play or not, if there was any
Well, fourth and fifth grade looks different than sixth and seventh. Because sixth through twelfth grade.
Okay.
Well, but you're a twelve-year-old is what is the age, so you could be a sixth grader, be eleven.
Okay.
Twelve years of age is when it, it hits the truancy state law.
Okay, so I didn't know that, thank you. Okay. And then, just going back to having clear behavior expectations, matching the high school's because like I'm reading the, you know, like the academic and behavioral system of support. But it, it just, it, it reads differently than the high school's. I mean, so like, I would like to see the chart that is in the high schools where it's, you know, not disrupting class
Yeah.
and impeding others' learning.
Trina just shared it with me today. We talked briefly about it and I'm like, looks good. But I didn't really want to make any changes to it today just because I didn't get a chance to talk with Teal. And I feel like he needs to be a part of that conversation. We do have the behavior grid, which we've used, which is LinkedIn, which is similar, but this does give a much more clear, crisp feeling to it, more clarity, so I do plan on talking about that with, with Teal.
Okay, yeah, I would like to see that. And then just, just, again, just consistency.
Yep.
Middle school and high school, so that we're not setting up for kids to fail once, you know, not fail, but have more problems. I guess if people want to get to the high school, they know what the expectations are.
And again, within the middle school, like, fourth grade looks
Yes.
a little bit different, so then we have to align with the elementary. So we're always kind of right there in that middle.
In the middle.
So what we have right now is aligning to what we've used in the past, which is the grid. But I do like what, what Trina shared today and I'm, I think that should be one of the first topics that we talk about as an admin team is making sure that we are being consistent with that, so.
And I, and I realize this is a lot of work to go through and everything, so I really appreciate the time and effort that everybody has put into this, so, thank you.
Yeah, and it's good to have new people because you have new ideas.
The cell phone policy is in the high school too, Angie?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor and the voting devices are now open. Anyone like to change your vote? Hearing none, Danny?
My vote is yes.
And Dustin has it in, so you can reveal it and it passes. Athletic codes N, need a motion?
I move the board approve the recommended updates to the Antigo High School Culture Curricular Code as presented.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
Mr. Schofield presented at committee. Again, it was cleaning up some language and making sure that a lot of clarity. There were quite a few changes to this one this year, but it was more to provide clarity and consistency again.
Any other questions?
Do we provide, like, if somebody is struggling, do we just say, you know, you need to work on your classes, get your homework in, stuff like that? Or do we actually, like, help them find the resources that they need, whether it's a tutor, whether it's, you know, talking with the teacher to set up additional, not just, you know, during the school day, but additional help? Or maybe even online, things like Khan Academy or anything like that to help them?
So what I do with all of my coaches prior to, you know, try to get ahead of that, we, I share whole expectations of what our high school has to offer for those helps. So I have a sheet that has discussion about utilizing pride time, how to actually, you know, utilize, make sure you're going to the teachers as you need help, do that. Coaches talk with those students that are struggling after schoolwork. Obviously, yes, practices are important, academics are more important. So if they need to stay after and go work with a, you know, teacher and they need to make up a quiz or they gotta do something and they get, didn't get done during the pride time because they had somebody else to work to, they have to do that. Tutors, yes, all that information is shared with our coaches, they know that. We share that with the, the athletes as well, we try to help them. I bring, you know, usually, you know, whenever, we try to stay proactive. Obviously, I discuss about academics a lot when I talk into the commons and do our signups. I do that a lot during our fall sports meeting, winter sports meetings, obviously, we're always hitting academics. And then we discuss, obviously, if somebody did slip up or they are going to be on those grade checks and stuff, we try to really give them, you know, extra help, talk with their parents' guardians, discuss what's going on, how can we make sure that they're, you know, trying to get to where they need to be at, what's going on? How can we help, support, get them there? And so a lot of that is shared out with everybody, so, yeah.
Thank you for that. So students obviously have one piece of the puzzle, but then the other piece of the puzzle is also teachers putting in grades. Have you run into any kind of issues with that and how have you handled, you know, like, is, because I, I know for a fact that there is, there, in the past, there's been issues where some, I, you know, and I'm not trying to throw teachers under the bus because I know they have a ton on their plate and they have a huge workload and stuff, but if you're three, four weeks behind in updating grades and assignments that have come in, I mean, that's an issue. That affects their, their grades, you know, whether it be at home or at, you know, for sports and stuff like that. And it's maybe not the students' fault. They have everything turned in, even late assignments are coming in, but they're just not getting graded or lost. Like, I know my daughter personally has had to turn in one assignment three different times because it kept getting lost. So.
Yes, and when stuff like that happens, obviously, I talk with my administrative building, I talk with principal, I talk to the administrative assistant, associate, and we work through them to work with the teachers, ask them what happened here. They go through the situation, obviously, it, you know, if somebody turns in a late assignment, you know, that's a little bit different. If it's on time, I mean, that's gotta be, you know, graded and put in in a timely manner. I know in the past there had been deadlines of, we want infinite campus upgraded every Wednesday. You know, everything should be up to date by then and then we'll move forward. Obviously, late work is different, but, you know, for students that have struggled and are on grade checks, obviously, that affects them even more because they need those grades in to be able to play.
Right.
So that, we really work with those teachers as well, making sure like if we know like they just put missing and they missed a quiz, but they missed a quiz because of an excused absence, then we talked about, you know, well, you know, I talked with the student athlete too, you gotta make the, you know, initiative to sign up for that pride time, you know, you, you know you missed that. You gotta make it up, otherwise it stays a zero. But the teacher obviously too should be hopefully reminding the kids if you're not making them up or pulling them in, calling them to their pride time so that way they get caught up on the grades.
Sure, and, and I know that was a frustration of some of our, our parents too in the district, so I, I just wanted to ask about that.
Yep.
So, two other things that are being built in proactively is we're building in a little more time for staff to be able to make sure they have the system and the time to be able to do those things, right? Because that's part of the issue. Because that's part of the issue. And the other thing that we're building in is we'll have an entire at-risk team. We've got some data rules, all of that information will be coming to you, and we'll be watching kids who are getting Ds, we'll be watching kids who are getting F's, and we'll be trying to proactively wrap supports around them before they get to the point of having to miss things. They may have to miss some athletics, I'll be real honest about that, but before they get to the point of completely failing or falling behind. So yes, athletics watches grades, but we will also be having a team of staff watching grades this year, too, so that'll be, that information will be coming, I think, next, to the committees next month.
I, I love that idea, so thank you so much. Thank you.
Any other questions about the athletic code? Hearing none, the voting device is open. Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing none, Danny?
My vote is yes.
His vote is yes, and Dustin, you can reveal it, and it passes. We're now to, oh, middle school code updates. Need a motion?
I move the Board to approve the recommended updates to the Annigo Middle School Sixth through Eighth Co-curricular Code as presented.
Kristen, would you like to speak to your motion?
Similar updates, good discussion with our team about working with our current resources, and, yeah, there's similar updates to the high school one.
Any other questions or comments?
I would like to say, like, the same thing should apply for the middle school. I don't know if, I haven't heard from middle school parents that there's been any kind of issues with, you know, teachers not updating grades, you know, so that they'd be reflected for sports and stuff like that, but I just wanted to mention that.
Want to respond, or you're already, you're already doing?
Yeah, well, once they get to sixth and seventh grade, it's, it's being natural, because the eighth graders are here, so
obviously, it's very natural for the sixth and seventh grade to have the grading system, too. Sixth grade, there's only a few sports that they're eligible for through school activities. I don't know if you wanted to meet with, come up with Tom, too. And then, seventh grade and eighth grade is pretty similar. They're doing a lot more traveling in each one of their sports. The grading can be quite tricky, though, because it's a much faster season, it's like six weeks. So, we try to align it the best we can, and when we know that we have who's on the roster, we're just doing the grade checks. The teachers are very fluent with it, like, they totally, they want the students to be held accountable to that as well, and so do the parents. A lot of times, a parent will take them out for something less than we have on our code, and that is completely up to them. So, what we have is doable, and we can hold each other accountable with it.
Yeah, like I said, I haven't heard anything from the community on, from the middle school's standpoint, but I just wanted to make sure that we're being consistent, again.
Yeah, and, and a lot of that, too, again, the, it mostly would affect the kids that received one F at a grading period, because those are the ones that would be on the grading checks. The ones that have passed other classes, either, you know, for the upcoming fall sports, that's all semester two grades. You know, the ones that are gonna be winter sports, that's where they go off of quarter one grades until semester one grades are done. So, like, we still have the grade checks, you know, that go in place of what we go off of, but like you said, obviously, the consistency of having all the teachers making sure they get their grades in up to date to help those that are struggling, and that we give them those supports to make sure that, you know, they have that goal, because they, obviously, athletics are a big thing for a lot of these kids, and they want to be on the court, they want to be on the field, they want to be competing, so making sure that, you know, they work with our teachers, and our teachers are working to get those grades in so they can.
Yeah, and, and not only for sports, but then also, like, when parents get your, you know, when you get your kid's report card home, and it says, you know, midterm grade is an F, and then all of a sudden, the final grade is an A, it's like, what? And it was because things weren't turned in.
Which ultimately, with grades, it comes down to the leadership in the building admin.
Right.
Because it's the admin's job to ensure that the staff are entering their grades, it's really secondary to the athletic code, because...
Yeah, it ties in, but, yeah.
You know, so, it directly impacts them, yes, but is it the code?
No.
No, it's the building admins, so.
I just wanted to bring it to, I guess, everybody's attention, I guess, you know?
Okay, any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, the voting devices are now open. Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing none, Danny?
My vote is yes.
Okay, Dustin has it in, you may reveal. Thank you, it passes. Okay, P., report of donations.
Move the Board to approve the following donation, $200 for the school forest from the concession stand in the bike race. And I would speak to that motion by first saying thank you for the donation. This is a very interestingly written source of the donation. Is there any feedback on the bike race? I don't know what that means. Oh, okay.
I don't know anything about the bike race.
Me neither. So I...
But again, thank you to the, the donation to the school forest.
I apologize for not knowing about the bike race.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the $200 donation. The voting devices are open. Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing none, Danny?
My vote is yes.
And Dustin? And it passes. We're now to four administration reports, and we start with A. Introducing of new administration, and I'm gonna let Mrs. Oginski point out her new people.
So, first, we would like to recognize on our camera, Dustin, can you, if she is still with us, Mrs. Kesha Mushak, our new tech director. Welcome Kesha to the Annigo Red Robin Nest.
Thank you.
We're very fortunate to get Kesha. She has some experience as a former tech director, and as I said earlier, she's already started helping us with creating and implementing, implementing systems that help our efficiency and ensure mistakes not being so prevalent. So, welcome Kesha.
Thank you.
Okay, up next, we have Ms. Deb Wagner. Deb comes to us, wave Deb. As a former person who has spent a lot of time in special education, so we're very fortunate to have her join our team. She is very enthusiastic and ready to go, and, and we welcome her with open arms, and she's already made the move to Annigo and getting settled in, and so, welcome Deb. And up next, we have a familiar face, Mrs. Trina Barnaman. Trina has moved closer to the high school, I may add, and she, too, comes to us with experience as a high school administrator. So we're very fortunate to welcome Trina, and I have to add that Trina went through a very extensive interview process, but it was very important to us to make sure that we had the right person in place, because it's no secret that our high school needs support, and is a concern that we have heard throughout the community, and I feel that we have the right person in place to help lead those changes and support our students. We've got great kids, and she's gonna help us to tell the positive story about all the wonderful things that we have happening in Annigo. And last but not least, we have Mr. Aaron Dobie, who is our new elementary principal. We are very fortunate to also secure Aaron in our district. He comes to us with very many years, not, not meaning very, with a, with a lot of years' experience as an elementary classroom teacher, which is very important to me personally. I feel like if you are able to talk instruction with teachers from the side that you have at the elementary level, because there's so many moving parts, that you have walked in their shoes, there's a different sense of respect and understanding. So, Mr. Dobie has also been a principal, a building principal, but this will be his first round as being an elementary principal, so he's brushing off his elementary skills to get ready to welcome our youngest learner. So, welcome Aaron, we're happy to have you with us.
Okay, we move on to B., Director of Business Services. These are the reports. Any questions for Kelly? Hearing none, we'll move to C., Director of Pupil Services and Special Education. Any questions for Deb? Hearing none, D., Director of Curriculum and Instruction. Any questions? Amy already presented, so she's happy that you did not ask any questions. Director of Building and Grounds, any questions for Jake?
I don't have a question, but I do want to just say that I have heard lots and lots of great things coming from the community on how great the middle school windows look, and how much of a difference that has made, just on the optics of that building. So, just wanted to let you know that.
Yeah, it looks nice. I can actually sit in my wife's parlor, drinking my coffee in the morning, and actually see trees, leaves moving in the second window coming from the side where Danny lives. Okay, and that's nice that you did that, Angie, because it is beautiful, it's made a big difference. Director of IT, any questions for Kesha? Hearing none, G., Superintendent Report.
So, it's a very busy time of the year, though my superintendent report doesn't reflect all of the work being done, continuing policy work. We also have a NEOL update that's going to be released soon, so we will have to schedule another policy committee to update all of those policies. Another thing that we have been working on collectively is updating our P-card processes for our district, so there will be some changes coming there to make sure that we are being physically responsible, and that there is a clear, consistent understanding of how the management of our purchasing cards is going to flow for the upcoming year, and this isn't something that's just an Annigo thing, but many districts are looking to streamline and sort of rein in the amount of purchasing cards that their district has. So that is something that we've been spending time working on to create specific processes, and how those things will be handled across the district. Also, as you see, reviewing and updating handbooks, we have been working on both students' and staff handbooks, along with changing our employee handbook to where, and this is coming, it hasn't been to the Board yet for approval, to have a support staff handbook and a professional handbook, so that there is clear understanding of what applies to which employee category, because it can be quite confusing, especially if there are things that we have to result or communicate with our board attorneys over. It's just a much easier process if we have clear handbooks. So, we've spent a lot of time working through that. Tina, all of the directors, and our building principals have been part of that process. And one thing that I didn't, Angie had talked about the cell phone policy earlier, and I feel this is something that we missed this month, and perhaps even last month, without having board recognitions. But I had a parent reach out to me from another school district up north, and she wanted to know what our process was for our cell phone policy, that she was very impressed with how things had, you know, it seemed to be a lot of talk about, well, Annigo is doing this, but then, after it went into place, then, you know, every, the chatter quickly died, and everyone got on board and wanted to know what our process was. So I shared with her the communication that was sent out, and the fact that we had worked collectively with the middle school and high school admin to craft our communication to be sent home to our families, along with, at the high school level, instilling the support from our students. I felt like that had a positive impact on the students being more involved in participating with the cell phone policy, so just a, a positive for that. And then the last thing is still continuing to work on planning and preparing for the new school year. That's all I have.
Any questions for Mrs. Oginski?
Will there be an upcoming meeting regarding communication publications for the referendum?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I can add that on my next superintendent report, yes, but we have been working on that, a lot, back and forth.
Anything else? Okay, with that, we will move to number five, closed session. I will read it, and then I'll be looking for a motion to go into closed session. A. Consideration of a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub C of the Wisconsin Statutes for the Purpose of Considering Employment Promotion, Compensation, or Performance Evaluation Data of any public employee over which the Board of Education has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, including administrators' contracts. B. Consideration of a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Section 19.851 Sub G of the Wisconsin Statutes for the Purpose of Conferring with Legal Counsel for the Governmental Body Who is Rendering Oral and Written Advice Concerning Strategy to Be Adopted by the Body With Respect to Litigation in Which It Is or Is Likely to Become Involved. C. Consideration of a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statutes, Sections 19.851 Sub A and Sub F, for the Purpose of Deliberating Concerning a Case Which Was the Subject of Any Judicial or Quasi-Judicial Trial or Hearing Before the Governmental Body, and Considering Personal Histories or Disciplinary Data of Specific Persons Which, if Discussed in Public, Would Be Likely to Have a Substantial Adverse Effect Upon the Reputation of Any Person Referred to in Such Histories or Data, Including Discussion and Possible Action or Expungement of a Student Expulsion Order. I need a motion. We have a motion, and we are, do I need to take a roll call on this one, or just the...
Yes, Dave, you must take a roll call.
We need a roll, see, roll call came into my mind, you're the guy, I'm just making sure, I'm in your seat. So, we need a roll call. Yes.
Bobby Brown. Matt Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Matt Horn.
Yes.
Scott Peterson.
Yes.
Dr. Solon. Kathy Schreiber.
Yes.
Dave Schrader. Annie Kaye.
Yes.
Okay, we're now moving into closed session. Thank you for all being here tonight.